We're gonna start with a moment of silence in our presence of Mr. Randy.
Josh, you wanna leave this in the place?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day and thank you for the beautiful day that you've given us today. And God, we just thank you for all the exciting things that we've just heard. God, I pray that you would just be with us tonight as we meet and discuss business for the school district. God, I pray that you would give us wisdom and how to make things move forward and do it in a way that honors you. I pray that we would just always keep the kids of the district first and God, their education. And God, I just pray that you would just be with each one of these administrators that work every day in the schools with the kids. God, I pray that you would give them wisdom to do their job on a daily basis. And God, I just pray that you bless this time together tonight in Jesus' name. Amen.
Do you have a board or call this meeting to order on May? Or this is not May, this is March 13th, 2025.
Okay, well, welcome everybody. Thank you for being here. I'd point first to the consent agenda, which would approve our, this agenda for this meeting in minutes from February 13th and the district financial reports. If there are any questions, and if there aren't any, then I would ask that the consent agenda be approved.
There are no questions, can I get a motion to approve consent agenda?
I'll make a question.
I guess I get my C. All in favor? Motion carries.
Okay, moving on to our special reports. We have the art, high school art department here, and they've got a special mural project that they want to present to us.
Okay, who do you want to... Okay, well, Ms. Enix asked to share some things about this project we have working on. But I wanted to come and share because first of all, I wanted to thank her and our administrators for, first of all, letting us, our art teachers' PLC together once a month, because that's what kind of led to this project. Since we're singletons at each of our campuses, usually our PLC meets with, you know, just whoever has the same prep as us. So I might be in with all the English teachers or history teachers or, you know, and which is good sometimes. But it's really helpful to be able to meet with the other art teachers once a month and share resources and ideas and everything. And so one of the things that we shared during our monthly PLC group, and that's district-wide. So St. Paul meets with us and all the campuses meet together and we just kind of rotate classrooms. But anyway, one of the things that we met up and learned about was an art expo that happened in January. And so we all went to that then and were able to meet with lots of other art teachers and find art teachers. So music and band and dance and all that. And at that expo, the Crystal Bridges was taking applications for a mural project that they were working on. And I applied and a few weeks later, we got an email saying that we were accepted to work on this mural project. And what it consisted of is, wasn't until about a month ago that they, five weeks ago actually, that they said, okay, so here are the logistics. You're gonna come and pick up a four-foot by eight-foot roll of canvas. You'll get a few materials and brushes, and we're going to give you the theme for the mural. And then everything else is up to you. So I went to Crystal Bridges, picked it up, and the theme for the mural was, how are you...
Like representing diversity within your school?
Yes. How are you, how are you showing diversity in your school? So I took the materials and that theme back to my Art III class. I started with them. Savannah Valines is in my Art III class. And she, well, she, they looked at their school and said, how are we, you know, showing diversity? How are we coming together through our diverse gifts at our school? So we looked at clubs, different organizations, classes, and looked at how all of these special gifts that we have, these diverse gifts, are bringing us together. And I'll let Savannah talk to you some more about now how that project is going. And if you want to, Bailey, put that picture up. We, I just brought some pictures of the kids working on it.
Yes, so this project has been so fun and we've all grown a lot through it. So as soon as Ms. Giffen told us, you know, the theme for this project is diversity, we all started like collaborating. We had a series of group conversations and just said Huntsville represents so many, like an incredible amount of diverse gifts. Like there are so many different things that we have to offer. So we started working on this project and we built up our composition of it on my iPad, which was really cool. Because you can design things online, like digitally through that. So we got, all got together and built up our plan. And we were able to pour all of our ideas into one thing, which once again adds to the diversity message. So that was really cool. And then not just our Art III class, but all of our art classes have been working on this. And so throughout the day, you'll come in each day and see new things that everybody has been adding to it. So that has been really cool. One of my favorite parts about this is you look at the mural itself and it shows diversity. But not only that, the workers behind it show diversity and show diverse gifts. So I'm so eager to see it once it's finished because it has been looking really cool. But we would love to invite you to come. By Friday, we'll have 80% of the mural done. But on Saturday, Crystal Bridges will be open from 11 to 4:00 and we'll be doing a live painting to complete it. So you're welcome to come. If you're not able to make it, but you would still like to go see it, it will be on display throughout spring break. So we would love if you would like to come see it. And we're hoping, and we haven't heard for sure where it will be displayed after that, but probably a few different locations and then it should end up back here with us. So if we wanted to hang that up one day, whatever, but you can kind of see a little snippet of it there, but...
You can go to the next slide. So I didn't want, I had Savannah on, she took her iPad and blurted out. She blurted out. Okay, so you can kind of, you can kind of, I don't want you to see it and say, oh, I get the gist of it. So I really don't need to go and see Crystal Bridges. So we're saving that for that. But anyway, and it also is not completed. We really have to bust it to get done this week. Or to even to 80% completion. But anyway, it's gonna be a really amazing experience. I mean, they're gonna have a piece of art displayed in Crystal Bridges. And they're gonna get to paint in the great hall at Crystal Bridges. And, you know, their families, their friends, whoever wants to come and watch. I think there are around a dozen other schools that are also participating in this project. But it's been really neat because every, I don't have one single class that doesn't have kids up there painting on it. And like, I mean, you could come in at any time during the day and you'll see kids are up there working on it. And it's been neat because, you know, there'll be like different students that this is what they specialize in and they're so good at this and there's a lot shown in this mural. And anyway, I think the whole idea and everything behind it is gonna be really impactful. And whenever we eventually get it back, it's gonna be a really great and treasured piece that I think we can be proud of.
Yes. So thank you all for allowing us to be able to do projects like this.
Yes, thank you very much. And like I said, her, like Savannah said, Saturday from 11 to 4:00, it's free admission at Crystal Bridges. But all throughout spring break, if you want to just stop in there, you'll be able to see it on display. And so that'll be a cool thing to take, you know, family to see.
Thank you all very much. Moving on to the superintendent report, we have our financial projection report. And enrollment report, that'd be... Go ahead and go to the enrollment report. If you all want to ask a question about the projection report, that's fine. But enrollment report, you'll see that from the previous month, we did drop 21 students. A lot of them, about 15 of them, were from the high school. Went back and looked at the previous year and we did see this kind of drop in May. So not necessarily in February, between February and March, but it did happen last year. We're still well above where we were last year at this time. We're still well above what our predicted, you know, kind of our trend enrollment was predicting for this year. But it did, we did see a drop this year.
I do have, if you'd like to see the reasons on the high school, I do have that.
I don't want to talk about it up.
Yeah, yeah, let me... Once you see it on paper, it doesn't sound as bad.
It really is just normal attrition, what it will down there.
Thank you, man. We'll start looking at these numbers and hit our three-quarter ATM next week or next month. April 15th, that's when we'll set that number. That goes to our foundation, you know, what our foundation funding is based off of, how much money we'll get next year. So that's why we keep this data for us each and every month. If there aren't any questions about either one of those, we'll go on to administration.
Okay, you want to go ahead and tell us?
Sure. So as I told you guys, last board meeting, I had several career fairs coming up. I feel like I've been living out of a suitcase a little bit this month. I've been to several, but they've been good with the exception of one. Got lots of interest, lots of kids interested in, you know, moving to this area, potentially Huntsville. We don't have a lot of openings right now and so it's hard to say, you know, hey, apply for this position. But definitely some interest. And even, I went down to Arkadelphia to Henderson State. Didn't expect a lot down there, but several kids looking to come to this area, so that was good. This week, I'm going to, Friday, I'm going to Arkansas Teacher Residency Program training. They're just gonna talk a little bit about this new residency program. And hopefully I'll have some information to share with you guys about that next month. So I think that's it.
We're just trekking in the tech world, hoping to knock out a couple of projects next week whenever everyone's gone for spring break. We did launch a new app this last week and for, well, the community, parents, faculty, students. Just another avenue for us to stay up to date. We can push out updates through the app. They can use it to, you know, it's a convenient one-stop shop for checking lunch menus, some quick resources and that kind of thing.
It is very handy for that.
I'm sorry.
It's very handy for that.
Yes.
So it's always the first question.
It's even old man friendly, huh?
Well, we try to make it user for all ages of technology, you know, savviness. So we did try to keep that in mind for who all may be using it. That'd be pretty, we just want it to be a resource. We don't want it to be just something they have to figure out, like, you know, so it's not, it doesn't have everything. But, you know, it gives you the basic information, which is what we've discovered most people just want. And then we also did get a new tech van, a new-to-us tech van this last month. So big thank you to the board. Thank you to Harry and Mr. Warren for working that out for us, for our department. But it's been very much appreciated and we've already put it to good use. So I just wanted to say thank you for that.
We've got baseball, softball, soccer, and track going right now. So everything's kind of leading up to spring break right now. But baseball's on one plane tonight and they're out of town. So it's allowed me to be here for the first time in a long time, not having to cover a game. But as far as other things, the arena, we have the padding for the end walls being delivered on Wednesday. And the floor covering is already here, but they're, when they deliver that, they're also gonna get training to our maintenance guys on how to properly put that out. Well, it's like eight, eight-foot rolls, 160 foot long or something like that. So anyway, that way we can put that out for, you know, for graduations and band concerts and all that sort of thing. So which we have, you know, one week in May, we've got, you know, the whole week booked for events in there. So it'd be handy to be able to get that done, so. As most of you know, we lost, we lost one of our custodians this last month, which was a big blow to the staff. Everybody loved him, everybody respected him, and I sure miss him, I miss him myself. And there's a lot of knowledge that went with him. But everybody's pitched in, they've been filling in. We've got a couple of subs that are working right now and trying to work towards a full-time job. We didn't have a young man start today, athletic custodian, the vacant position on that. Try him out for a month and if everything goes well, we'll put him before the board next month.
Can I say something, Mark, right quick on that?
Sure. Those of you who don't know, Woody, Russell Woodburn, our custodian over there, has been doing both jobs just because, out of necessity, for quite some time. And he would, he would come in at eight o'clock in the morning and sometimes not go home until three o'clock in the morning. You know, cover, because, you know, basketball games and everything else. So he's done an amazing job just keeping that place, you know, in order for us. So I just want to put his name out there. He's done a fantastic job, and he's very selfless about it. That's his building. Have you seen, that's his building?
A question.
Yes.
Would it be illegal for the school to use kids, ISS punishment stuff, to help the janitors at the ballgames and stuff like that? It's illegal?
There's a lot of steps you have to go through, background checks.
Okay, fair enough.
We do have two high school seniors that are helping right now, two hours a day at primary. There are lots and lots of rugs in each classroom. And they're mainly taking out the trash and vacuuming rugs. And it's really helped the ladies there that clean that building to them not feel so stressed and so pushed. And we appreciate them. They're doing a good job. They've been working for a couple of weeks now. The maintenance end of it, our new program, Operations Hero for our work orders. Had a meeting last Tuesday, got another meeting next week. They're pushing it forward. They've already migrated most of the work orders and users over to Operations Hero from school, dude. Looks like we're running first or second week of next month, it will go live. So a lot of training between now and then, not only the guys that use it, but people that went and put the work orders in. It's pretty simple. It's kind of a one-stop deal. If you've got an email address, you can punch into that, pull up Operations Hero. No extra passwords required. It's simple to submit a work order. So that's about all I've got.
The child nutrition department seems to be doing pretty good. We still have a couple of openings at Crowder, but we are using one of the student, the seniors at the high school that's working through the work program. So we'll utilize some of our kids also. We had a good participation with the National Breakfast Week last week. We fed over 400 kids for breakfast at Primary last week, so that's, that's up a lot. And, you know, they, we've been doing really good with that. And the kids seem to really enjoy it. They had little color sheets that I printed off for Nerrastanata to kind of incorporate all of the National Breakfast Week and the nutrition stuff that goes along with it so that they could participate in all that as well. So we're doing good.
We had Bus Drive Appreciation Day on February 22nd. I just want to thank everybody, like every campus, every building chipped in, did something for them. It was great. Bailey jumped in big time, came in solid, gave us some drinks, brought them some other goodies. Doing really great. We also did our spring evacuation drills here. And I've got some info for you, just on mileage and head count and stuff like that, if you want to share. Before we said, we drive to Orlando and back every day, but now we're 40 miles short. We combined a route this year, so we're just not quite there. See our school district size, then they're to compare to some of our friends around us. Farmington living the dream down there.
I think we're third in the state as far as square mileage. Not necessarily the bus routes, but just land.
Yeah. For our... The wind walled in our heads. And then lastly, Rogers has got some used school buses for sale. I'm gonna try to get a couple. Tina said, go ahead and get eight of them, but I think two might work. But one of them's got a wheelchair lift we could really use. They're worth about 10 grand for that one, and then just another route bus, they're worth $8,500 for.
Whatever you, do you get to go look at them?
Yeah, I sent a mechanic over on Friday, checked them out. We picked up, well, only one had a lift, we took that one, then we picked up the rest one out of the rest of them.
We're paying for these out of a specific fund that we, we don't utilize it and we basically lose it. So of course that will, it does, yeah. This and the cargo van that was purchased for this tech department all came out of the same specific fund.
That's all I got. Good evening. First thing I want to do is brag on, we had a fifth grade student competing in the state spelling bee this past Saturday. She didn't win, but it was a great experience for her and she had a great time. I was at the state basketball finals and texted a teacher that went with her and asked if she was doing okay, because this young lady is not one to get nervous. And she said she is really nervous and when they went into the arena, her eyes about popped out of her eyes. It was an eye-opening experience, but she had a great time and so really proud of her for that. We're gonna be math testing tomorrow and the next day in our third through sixth grade. Finishing up math testing with that group for the year. And then of course, you know, get back from parent-teacher conference or spring break. We got parent-teacher conferences, gearing up for those. And to be honest with you, everybody's looking forward to spring break. Staff getting some time off. And I just wanted to say I'm real appreciate, appreciative of the staff that we have down there. Everybody's doing a fantastic job, just like everybody else. They're tired, they're exhausted, but everyone is still pushing through and everything's going pretty good. That's all I got from our end down there.
Hey, y'all have been following Facebook. You've seen a lot of stuff that we've posted about different things that kids have done. One, one good thing that we've done, I'm gonna have to read this other one because I can't remember anything that I posted about this other kid. But Mr. Sloan, he's an area gentleman, gave a card to the Skills USA Club and wanted them to fix it up and give it to one of our students that's in that program. And Mark Martin received that and he actually worked on the card and helped clean it up. Didn't realize that he was getting it until they called his name, if you could have seen his face. And he was trying not, he said, I was trying not to cry. And I said, it's okay if you did. He wouldn't think anything bad, but he's very deserving. And Mark was one of those little kids that you just, it's a good thing he was cute because you've burned his neck a bunch of times in high school grades. But he's really grown out of that and is doing good things. He's actually got a job lined up with an H-back company that he's gonna work, work at after he graduates. And he'll be, and he doesn't care if I tell all this, so I'm gonna tell it. He will be the second person in his family to graduate from high school. So that's a big, big accomplishment for him. Our Huntsville choir is going to state, so that's exciting. Juan Monerosa, so if you don't know Juan, he's a junior. He's also bilingual, so that's another plus for him. He likes to do calculus for fun, so I don't know where that comes into play. But he, Chandra Dennis, our instructional facilitator, got him hooked up with a professor at the University of Arkansas that teaches calculus. And he's mentoring him and he was over there sitting through lectures. He sat through the same lecture three times. So this kid is really, really loves calculus. Mr. Warren got to meet him that day. He talked him into doing this test. It's the Regional Arkansas Council, Council of Teachers of Mathematics, ACTM. He took this test. There were several students from big schools, Fayetteville, Springville, Rogers, Bentonville, Haas Hall, and then some other private schools. He came in second place out of all of those, only missing first place by one question. So the kid who won made a perfect score. He gets to go to state, it's gonna be at UCA. But he said the best thing about all of it was, is when they called Huntsville as number two every... I won't say exactly what he said. He said, I was trying, I'm not trying not to be ugly, but he said, all those private schools just looked at me like, who are you? So that was, that was the best thing that he said that happened that day. So he got a medal, he showed the medal and it's really exciting. So, he got a medal, he showed the medal, and it's, it's really exciting. And he's gonna win the Nobel someday and, or, you know, find a cure for cancer or something like that. But he's, he's a great kid. And we're, and other than that, we've been working on schedules, credit checks, getting all that lined up for the end of the year so we can get the kids what they need for next year, so. And we have just finished the ACT, and I think he's gonna talk about something else that we did at CTE, so I won't steal your, your pleasure.
Y'all, on February twenty-third, we took our eighth graders to the CTE building here in town for a tour. Stetson Ledbetter set it up. And it was just really cool. The kids got to see all of the different programs that are offered there. And we came back, I talked to a lot of the kids about which ones they, they kind of liked. I think it really built interest and, and kind of just showcased that. And, you know, eighth graders aren't one to really think about their future a whole lot. You know, maybe what's for lunch, that's about as far as it goes. So, really getting them to think about their future, I think, was really cool. And just, and really kind of opened their eyes to some things. So, really appreciate them setting that up and doing that for the kids.
I think the welding helmet sold off.
Yeah.
Maybe they all got to wear the welding helmets that day, so.
Yeah, wear the helmet. So, that's pretty cool. And those kids are doing some pretty cool things over there, too. It was really neat to hear from the kids, you know, her kids talking to our kids about the expectations. And so, I think that really clicked. Our history club went Friday to Fair Grove Battlefield. She mentioned the choir. Our choir went to choral performance assessment last week. Received all ones and twos, which is excellent or superior, so real proud. They also scored excellent in sight reading. And that's, if you're a choral person, that is pretty, pretty awesome, so kudos to them. Tuesday and Wednesday, we're doing, tomorrow and Wednesday, we're doing our last round of maps testing at middle school. We have six students at the East Conference. They left today, hot springs. Been there till Thursday. As Bruce mentioned, we have spring break course next week, parent-teacher conferences. Then our PD day on the thirty-first with the staff. And then on April fifth and sixth, our FCC LA group's going to state. So, at that time of the year, our kids are doing a lot of neat things.
If everything goes as planned, after spring break, we should be moved over to Porterstone Bank. So, that'll be done and be a relief. Other than that, just rilling people in from spending too much money.
Well, I have the opposite problem. I can't get everybody to spend enough money because federal money has to be spent. So, that's what I've been working on. Final budgets are due the end of this month, so trying to get money moved between codes and whatever needs to be done in that building to make that money most useful. And then also just working through special education referrals. This, this is the time of year, so it's, it's really busy on both fronts.
I don't have a whole lot different than what she said. We just have, this time of the year, we have lots of annual reviews. We have to meet with parents every year to update any specialized instruction that they need. And tomorrow, I'm going to a training at the co-op called Inclusive Practices and taking a team from the intermediate school. And just trying to get those kids to get as much gen ed content as they can and get their specialized learning. So, just different strategies to help them do the best they can. Lots of conferences.
Well, this week at primary, we have Spring Go Bingo, so if you're not busy Thursday night, come get a card, have a good time. It's a very popular event, and it is open, you don't have to have kids in primary to come. And we have lots of families that come because they just enjoy it. So, we hope you guys can make it. I also just want to say, last week, we racked up, just because of the busyness with high school and all the end-of-year events, our CDA kids finished up in our building last week. And what a blessing that's been having future educators being able to be in our buildings, working with kids, really getting to see what they're getting into. And Miss Comer probably knows, this is such a high need. We've got local, you know, daycares that are closing faster than they're reopening. New lines being opened and, you know, butterball that's just really gonna create a need. And so, it's just good that we've had that opportunity to host those students. They've been a very big blessing to our teachers and our students that they've worked with. So, I just want to say thank you to them and for, to Ms. Gregg for starting that program with us and just allowing us to kind of co-host that with them. So, other than that, we are just really looking forward to Friday. We really are. It's a busy week, lots going on. We're ready for spring break.
I have an update from Ms. Hawkins for the intermediate school. They had their parent night on March seventh. And they had a painting night, and they, she said they had ninety-nine guests, ten. On the tenth, their third graders had their wax museum. I'm sorry, I missed that, I didn't know that was happening. And then you can watch the video from their, from that on their HIS Facebook page. And then they will have the all-important book fair on March twenty-seventh through the thirtieth. So, that's coming up. Make sure to get your checkbook ready. Don't, even if you don't have a kid in that building, probably hit it for money for book fair. It's a money-making thing.
Yes, it is. That's for the money.
Yeah, for you to put fair at different conferences.
That, I was just thinking, I'm sure Ms. Eaton probably set that up. As you know, she's on maternity leave, and so she's got a great long-term sub in her place, so I bet you there is.
Thank you all for that. Moving on to the next, next segment is new business. And we do have a couple of policy recommendations. I've added, that's, there it is. Sorry, I'm gonna go ahead. So, we didn't, on your, not, not included in your packet, but on the table by your stuff is a, is a potential, another policy that was added to, to be changed potentially. We just didn't get it in your packet before, before that even, before they went out. It is policy three point one, or four one. It changes one word in there, and I'm gonna let them explain. I'm just trying to tell you that I, we didn't have it in the package that morning. Go ahead, yeah, yeah, go ahead, just, just the way things work.
Let me do that one first?
Whichever.
Okay.
How do you want it?
Well, the first one then, let's look at is three point eight, which is also, what is it, eight point five?
It's eight four five, CPPC.
It's the same policy, though. This is in regards to the unused sick leave that we get. The way the policy reads is that when you retire, you get, you can get paid up to ninety days of sick leave that you've accumulated. What we, especially in the situation that first time we've ever experienced something like this, the proposal is, we would like to add also a point of death. That way, that we set money at they've accumulated, you know, employees been with us that long, accumulated that many days, that many things can still go to the family. Where it wasn't specified like that in the, in the policy before. So, that's what that one comes down to, which I think he put a copy there and also kind of darkened it.
Days over the accumulated ninety days, too, on that.
Oh, is that how it is longer? Okay. Yeah, I don't know if it's slightly different for CPPC or...
To be anywhere the same.
The same, okay. And we did, because we would like this to be kind of backdated to January first of this year. We did run ballots through, through certified and classified. I know for certified, we had a hundred percent vote for it.
The same for classifieds.
So...
Same for classified.
Yeah, so we're asking if you would agree to that.
Hundred percent.
Do we need to take a motion and vote on each one individually?
Let's do that, please.
So, can I have a motion to get your, your, I'm gonna say it, all in favor?
There she is.
Yeah, good eye.
Miss you, go ahead.
Thank you.
The other policy, this one can be, it, we're not backdating it, this is for next year. And it's just a one-word change, but it's in relation to the video surveillance and monitoring. You know, we have cam, we have cameras all over the campuses. But when you read that third paragraph, where it's, the current policy states violation of school personnel policies or laws caught by cameras. We're thinking if we change that word caught to maybe verified by cameras, it doesn't sound like a gotcha. Or, you know, we're watching. So, it's a little more positive take on how the policy is implied. So, but it's just the one word. Did it also go through polls and... We did not, only because it would be implemented for next year, so it didn't have to go to a vote. We did talk with PPC, though. PPC was all in agreement. Like I said, always kind of looking for that positive, positive term of things, so. That's it.
How about your motion? I'll stay here.
Does it get my mic, all in favor?
No.
Aye.
Motion here. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, move. Go ahead, ma'am.
Yes, I would just like to thank Mr. Warren for rewriting the policy on the, and changing the wording so that it would include your death. And we'd like to thank the PPC and the CPCC for getting all that done and a timely order so we could go out on that tonight and we could do this for that family. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, next item is section seven. We have the transfer request. We have four. For the most part, with a couple, with one exception, really, none of these students have been in our district. So, I would entertain a motion to, to accept the transfer request as presented.
Can I motion somebody?
Also.
Steve or Josh, you want to... All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Josh.
Yeah. They both threw their hands up at the same time.
Okay.
At this time, at this time, we're gonna go into executive session to discuss personnel. At this time, at this time we're gonna go into executive session to discuss personnel.
We're ready? All right, we're back. No action taken.
Moving on to personnel. At this time, I'm going to refuse myself. I have a family member that is on the sheet, so I will refuse myself.
We, I would ask that the school board approve the presentation's hires, transfers, and renewals, or transfers and renewals from this month.
Are there any questions regarding personnel? Can I get a motion?
A what motion?
A motion for a second. All in favor?
Okay. Transfers.
Can we go and come back to you there?
Yes, that's fine. Sorry.
Hey, Josh.
Resignations from personnel certified: Sarah Neal, Watson Primary Teacher, 62023. Classified resignations: Casey Julich, WPS Pre-K Paraprof, 22823. Autry Ruff, HMS Custodian, 22023. Randy Watkins, HIS Custodian, 21823. Karen Phillips, HIS Paraprofessional, 31023. Becky Ward, Food Service, 3223. Dorothy Woods, Food Service, 63023. Melissa Shepherd, Food Service, 63023. Hires certified, there are none classified: Michaela Kolb, HMS Special Education Paraprof, Paraprofessional, 185 Day, 32723. Transfers, none for certified, classifieds: Shasta, Shasta Christman, Christman, sorry. HMS Special Education Paraprofessional, Pre-K Paraprofessional, 31323. Next section.
Are there any more questions or anything we can ask before we go? Can I get a motion to adjourn?
You may go.
All right, you got a second.
There was, I'm sorry, I didn't write that down.
Everybody.
Johnson, Bob, okay.
All in favor?
Hi, hi.
Okay.
All right, okay.